Okay, at 5:30 PM, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If I could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Brewer.
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Here.
Commissioner McCowen.
Here.
Commissioner Jablonsky.
Here.
Commissioner Byrd.
Here.
Commissioner McClure.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Kendall.
Here.
And Commissioner Parker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Starting with our consent docket, item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes as follows, Planning Commission meeting minutes of March 13, 2025. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Seeing none, I would move for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote.
Moving to...
All votes have been cast and it carries eight to zero with one abstain.
Moving to our non-consent items, starting with item number two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-22, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman, so as to remove Lot 1 and Block 2 of East Lindsay Plaza, Section 5, to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the SPUD's Simple Planned Unit Development District and place the same in the SPUD's Simple Planned Unit Development District and providing for the severability thereof, 1451 12th Avenue Southwest. I would take the staff presentation.
Hello, so we have an application to amend the SPUD, once again, for the Tinker Federal located on 12th Avenue Southeast. So, disfronting properties are zoned R1 to the south, RM2 to the east, another SPUD to the west, and commercial C2 to the north. These are the existing buildings. This is an aerial of the overhead shot. So essentially, what the applicant is wanting to do is, they are wanting to add the use of an indoor athletic facility to the SPUD that was amended back in January of this year, 2025. This is a shot looking north on 12th Avenue Southeast, looking south, looking east towards the property, and west across the street. And this is looking north on East Gate Drive, which is to the west of the subject tract. And this is looking west towards the property from East Gate Drive. And this is the proposed site plan. The applicant is available for questions, and so is city staff, so...
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So the only thing that's changed is just adding that one, that one item?
Correct. They got more information since the original amendment back in January about what their client is kind of wanting, and they're wanting an indoor athletic facility or something of that nature is what...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is there an applicant presentation?
No.
All right. Any, any other questions by commission? Any audience comments? Planning Commission discussion? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries eight to zero.
For the next items, number three and four, I'd like to request a recusal.
I move that we recuse Commissioner Byrd.
Second. And a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries eight to zero with one abstain.
All right, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-33, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of Chapter 36 of the Code of the City of Norman, so as to remove lots 10-11, Block 72 of Norman Old Town to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development District and place the same in CCPUD City Center Planned Unit Development District and providing for the severability thereof, at 223 West Main Street. Is there a staff presentation?
There is. Good evening. On East Star with the Planning Department. This is the subject tract. It is lots 10 and 11, and the applicant is requesting to remove those from the existing CCPUD. And this census is in, excuse me, back up, remove it from the existing CCPUD in order to build a new two-story development, 4,000 square foot development, that will be a mixed-use residential development. Here is a look at the subject tract with the buildings on it. Currently, these 10 and 11 have a food truck park on it, and that will be removed. And you can see that on the aerial shot here. And this is looking south towards the site. This property is, and then let me show you, and this is looking east down Main Street, towards the railroad tracks. And this is looking west, and that's looking south towards that building. The applicants are proposing this building with eight parking spaces behind it off the alleyway. This will have, as I said, a commercial and residential uses. The ground story will have for the first 20 feet, retail and professional services, as required for the urban storefront Center City Form-Based Code district. And then in the rear, they will have three residential units, and then on the second floor, an additional five residential units. The properties that were zoned C3 at the time of the adoption of the Center City Form-Based Code are not required to have parking, but as I said, the applicant is providing eight angled parking spaces off the rear. And it is able to comply with most of the requirements of the Center City Form-Based Code, but they are requesting through the CCPUD the following. Allow additional signage. One is on the front facade on the awning. Another one will be on the side of the building, on the west side, on the second floor. And then allow for an exemption to the landscaping and open space, which is kind of typical along Main Street, so they'll just be maintaining the look that you already see there. And they're requesting 12-foot instead of clear height at 15-foot, and this is driven by construction materials, and this will match what is to the west at 227. Also, they'll be asking for allowable uses, which include, on the ground story, which include restaurant, bar, lounge, tavern, event space, and vehicle sales. And lastly, they're asking to reduce the fenestration requirement on the ground story from 40% to 50%. As far as impacts, the building, as I said, is required to sit basically on the front property line, so there's not really room for landscaping, which again matches what we see along Main Street. And their lack of open space is kind of typical also for structures in downtown Norman. The proposed structure meets the stated goals of the CCFBC district by creating a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use building, and the addition of ground floor retail space and professional services will complement the existing uses found in downtown. And the residential units will promote the stated goals of the CCFBC by expanding housing opportunities. The request to lower the clear height from 15 to 12 on the commercial portion and 10 on the residential rear portion is driven by construction materials and will match the clear height found next door, so that's compatible. And as I mentioned, under the parking section, the site does not require parking, but they are providing it, which will help reduce any impact on parking on Main Street. And the signage is similar to other signage found in downtown and is suitable for pedestrian-friendly streetscape. The proposed reduction in the ground story fenestration by 10% is a minimal change and shouldn't impact the pedestrian-friendly aspect of this building, and the overall design meets the design elements found in the urban feel of downtown Norman and the desired housing in the core area. And with that, let me, I think I forgot to show you the elevation drawings. And the applicant is here for a presentation, but with that, staff will forward this. I will say also, Andrews Park, located at 201 West Doll Street, is approximately two blocks north of this property. And with that, staff forwards this new Center City Planned Unit Development and Ordinance O-2425-33 to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation to the city council. With that, I can take any questions from the commissioners.
Are there any questions for the staff?
This may be a question for the applicant, but what was the reason for the reduced fenestration requirement on the first floor?
I do think that is a question for the applicant. I think it's construction material-driven, but I'll let them answer that.
I have a question about the change in clear height. So you said that the change from 15 to 12 is gonna match to the west, is that right?
Right.
But what about to the east?
No, but to the east, I do believe that may even... I do not know for sure that, what that clear height is on that building there, but yeah, I don't know. Sorry.
Can, I'm just kind of curious, where does this number 15 come from?
It was, it's been in the Center City Form-Based Code since the beginning. It's not the first time applicants have asked to vary from that. Apparently, you know, things come in even numbers in the construction world, and this doesn't really, 15 doesn't really lend itself to that. Not sure where 15 came from originally, but it has been in the code from the beginning.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, is if this is a common problem, I was surprised that 15 would be there.
I will say that way back, when we first had the Center City Form-Based Code, the next item, 227, was the first CCPUD, and that was the one thing that they requested. And so it's, but there haven't been a bunch of requests in the urban storefront area since that time. This may be the second one. And so, yeah, that may be second or third. So it's, yeah, like I said, it has been requested before.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for staff?
I do have clarification, yeah, there we go. I do have a clarification question in the staff report. It talks about the parking spaces are to be perpendicular except for one angled accessible parking spot, which it's noted in here, this configuration could cause potential conflicts for vehicles exiting the parking. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, yes, the traffic engineer, you know, gave that feedback after seeing the proposed site plan, and the applicants did receive that feedback. However, I think they have their reasons why they want to maintain that. This is not required parking, so we don't really have any, you know, requirements that it has to be a certain configuration. However, the traffic engineer did want to point out that it could be an issue and cause problems going forward. Thank you. Oh, is it on the next one? I'm sorry. It's very easy to get these two confused. Let me assure you, I've been working on it for a while, and I'm still...
I do have a couple more questions. I didn't hear it in the list of the CCPD requests that, basically the changes, but is there a minimum depth requirement within the Center City Form-Based Code?
Yes, I didn't make that clear. For the, for the use, or...
Well, so I think it's an 80-foot building as opposed to, you know, 140-foot building depth-wise. Is that requirement, or is that a deviation from the Form-Based Code?
I, I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but yeah, I would have to look. I'm sorry. I don't know that off the top of my head.
I am curious about that, if that's something we can look up. I mean, I know that Jane's over here looking it up, so...
Right. I thought you were referring to the 20-foot depth of the use.
Sure. We'll let the city staff look up the answer to this question. If there are no other questions for staff, then we'll move on to the applicant presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Gunner Joyce on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for all these questions. I think I'll start there, and then I can walk you through what we have, but to try and address some of those upfront, fenestration was, was an ask. The, the idea there is to allow for the front stairwell off of Main Street, so the residents can access both, there'll be some in the rear and on the front. And so we've got glass separated by brick to allow for a little bit of wayfinding. We don't want the retail to walk into the flats, and we don't want the residents to walk into the retail. So you can see there, the flats is the stairwell for the residents, and where it says tenant, and the rest of the glass, that's the retail. So we've added more brick to separate those two. We think it's saying we, Joey is the developer here and the design behind it. That was a little bit of the brick, and it lessens the glass and drops us to 43% fenestration on the ground instead of 50. So a little bit of design and wayfinding there. And also, because of the stairwell in the front, there's additional structural aspects that are right there that won't be, you know, pretty to look at through glass, so we just have those blocked out with brick. So that's the desire with the fenestration reduction there on the front. And then there was a discussion about the parking spaces, I think Onice mentioned that, but that'll be the next one that we'll talk a little bit about. And then, I apologize, Commissioner Jablonsky, but what was your question there?
I don't know.
If it comes back, then we'll, we'll jump into it in questions, but...
Oh, it was the clear height question.
That's right. So exactly, just like Onice mentioned, the very first CCPUD was this entire property. And so originally, Dr. Byrd's building is built there on the west, and then to the east is the open space. That's the lot that we're talking about. In this first item, the second one will be Dr. Byrd's and what he's retaining. But it was limited variances requested in that one. The, the clear height was one of them. And in detailed analysis, they basically went and matched as closely as they could to the existing Main Street clear height. So we believe everything to the east that's built out is right around that 12-foot, some of them we think are 10-feet, and that's what we had requested originally. And that first CCPUD, but working with staff, they kind of found a middle point at 12, and that's what's in the existing. Just like Onice said, when you get to 15, it triggers a whole bunch of different construction standards that elevate costs drastically. So it is a common request that you see to be less than 15, but 12. And so that request is mirrored in this one. It exists in the CCPUD that Dr. Byrd has currently. So now, that's right there. You can see the two properties, originally all zoned back in 2017, 2018 is the first CCPUD. To the west is Joey's project as well, that is well under construction. You probably passed it on your way here. That'll be hatch and sidecar and some additional retail spaces. That was a CCPUD. I think latest addition was 2021, we came in with an amendment to that for signage. And so that's one of the requests on this one, is an experience that we had in that CCPUD, having to come back once we had real users and change the signage requests. So we've matched some signage in this one that's greater than what's allowed by the Form-Based Code in hopes we wouldn't have to come back again with real end users. Here is the site plan. The font there is a little messed up, but basically, it's a two-story mixed-use building, and this is urban storefront. So what it requires on just, if you were to build it to code, is commercial on the ground floor, residential allowances up above. We retained that completely. Commercial is supposed to go a minimum of 20 feet deep in the building. As you can see there, we've got it at almost 30, 28 and a half. Commissioner Brewer, we were just discussing over there, that's the only depth requirement we were aware of. I don't think there's a depth requirement of the total building, so we are not seeking variance or believe that to be the case here. And then, in the back half of this, so back behind that 28 and a half retail space, will be ground floor residential units. So three units on the, on the ground floor, five units up above. It's basically planned to be a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units for those eight. There's a shared dumpster. That is exactly what's going on right now with the developments to the, to the west. Joey's current project and Dr. Byrd share a dumpster. They believe and haven't experienced that dumpster filling up to any concern yet, so they think that there's plenty of dumpster space for this project to share that as well. If it starts to fill up quicker, they can just request more frequent pickup. So that's something that we think will be a benefit to the area, not having three separate dumpsters with this project and this development, but just utilizing one for the whole thing. Opens up more parking and usable space in the rear. We've talked about, Onice listed them, but just real quick, the variances of the clear height. A request from that 15 to 12 for the retail is 10 for residential. The open space variance is to utilize the Main Street streetscape project. There's a very large, Onice's slideshow that well, existing mature street tree that's present now, so we really don't want to do anything to the frontage there. We'll keep the existing streetscape sidewalk, the tree, and the existing parking. And then the signage allowances, again, that's from real-world experience that Joey's had with the first CCPUD and coming back. We'll show them on the elevations, and then the reduced fenestration, as we talked about, with a desire for better wayfinding. There's the exterior elevation from the front. So you can see there a tenant sign on the awning. That's the retail space and the main entrance. Up above is the windows for the residential. To the right side of the screen, to the east, will be the entrance to the stairwell for the flats to go up to the second story. One of the signage requests, obviously, the 10... One of the signage requests, obviously the tenant and the flats on the awning, but the downtown flats, a preliminary name up there in the, in the top corner, and it's gonna look like an open book kind of folded. So you see it on the front, but you'll also see it on the left elevation up at the top as you drive by. And then the right elevation you will not see because there's an existing building there and it'll be built like Center City Form-Based Code requires lot line to lot line. And then that's the rear with additional entrances and windows from the back. So here's existing conditions. You can see no real open green space. The truck yard is all impervious, so it's turf, concrete. That's where this is gonna be built, that outdoor food space. And then you can see the hatch and sidecar building right there in the corner of Main and Webster. Dr. Byrd's building is just one building to the east that will retain exactly as it is, and you'll see that at the very next presentation, the next item. And so there is the proposed with the building, basically three buildings there together and then one drive aisle for additional parking. That'll be part of the site plan for the next item. And with that, Anice touched on all three of these staff quotes, but these are from the staff report, talking about how this is furthering the stated goals of the Center City Form-Based Code and specifically the goals for Main Street area by bringing in desired housing in the urban core. So just three of those quotes that are in the staff report. With that, happy to take any questions and Joey is available as well.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Are there any audience comments? No? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. There had, there was an open question. Commissioner Brewer had asked if there was a requirement on the depth of the building. Is that right? And I think we're hearing from staff.
Yeah, I, I went through this and I didn't find anything. There is the discussion about for lots with no alleys, there's a requirement for the building a 15-foot setback from the rear lot line. There is the discussion, as Gunner was mentioning, about the commercial use, 25-foot depth from the front. As long as, and this being between two other buildings, it's not a corner lot, their RBLs essentially set in the front and then extending back however far they wanted to go.
Before I jumped to getting a motion, I forgot to, to say, is there any discussion from the commission?
I, I do have some discussion questions, like I said, questions about the fenestration requirement. I feel like that's, I understand the clear height. That, that is a, something that may need to be addressed in the code moving forward, but the fenestration requirement, that seems pretty important to me. And it's, I, I understand the reasoning behind the kind of wayfinding separation, but I don't think that that is justifiable enough to reduce the fenestration requirement, given the importance of commercial along Main Street and the precedent it may set for additional applicants with that reduction. I, I think that knowing how storefronts can be built, I think that it would not be an issue to keep that 50% and, and still have the separation that's desired. I don't, I don't think the confusion's gonna be there with the commercial. That's my opinion. So other than that, I mean, there, the deviations from the Form-Based Code seem reasonable, but I would not be able to support it without that remaining.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with the recommendation to include the 50% fenestration requirement.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. All right. End of vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries seven to one with one abstain.
All right. Moving on to item four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-34. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of chapter 36 of the Code of the City of Norman as to remove lots 12 through 14, block 72 of Norman Old Town to Norman Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development District and place in the same CCPUD City Center Planned Unit Development District and providing for the severability thereof, 227 West Main Street. Is there a staff presentation?
They're requesting to amend it, to allow for two of the lots on the east side that you just heard to be removed is the primary goal. So most of this is gonna remain the same, but let me go through here. Here, oops, sorry. And here's the existing buildings as you saw previously. And there's the aerial showing the food park. So in this case, Lot 12 will have part of the food, food truck park on it and that will be switched to a parking lot. And, and the two lots to the east, so here's a view of the existing structure that's not going to change. Here's a view looking east towards the food truck park area, which two of those lots will become the building you just reviewed. And the immediate to the east lot there will be the new parking lot for this, for this building. And then this is a view back towards the west and then across the street. So the proposed parking is shown here on the site plan. They plan to retain the existing screening fence and leave an opening, opening for the pedestrian access. And then the, the parking will have these seven parking spaces plus the handicap parking, parking spaces, and they will be perpendicular except for the handicap, which will be at an angle. And as mentioned in the previous statements, there, there may be some conflict there. And so the CCPUD seeks to, oops, this is yours. It seeks to basically remain the same, except that the landscaping and open space will be as shown here on the site plan. And as I mentioned, retain that existing screening fence. The parking will be setback to 20 feet. And then, so that, so the impacts are minimal, except for the parking spaces there, that there could be a conflict there. And the parking will help alleviate any parking issues because it will provide for the customers at the dentist office. And I think, I think that kind of covers it. With that, staff forwards this request for an amendment to a CCPUD and ordinance zero, sorry, O-2425-34 to the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation. And I can take any questions that commissioners might have.
Yes, I have a quick question. I know there's that concern with that parking spot. If something should happen and they need to change it, what would they need to do? They wouldn't have to come back here, would they?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, if it's just a matter of the striping plan changing some, yeah, but if they needed to like expand or?
Yeah, it's if, if they needed to change the striping.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that would be an issue. If they needed to do something else, then yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. They need to change the site development plan significantly, yeah, they'd need to come back, basically. That's what I was trying to stutter through.
But staff has a little bit of difference there, correct?
Yeah, so if they wanted, like you said, restripe, I don't know, move the handicap spot closer to the alley or something like that, that wouldn't be a problem.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll take the applicant presentation.
Libby Smith on behalf of the applicant. So I'll admit Gunner took the more exciting project this time. This is, like Gunner said, these slides will look familiar. It has a current CCPUD and the current owner is selling two lots and so we have to come back basically for a site plan amendment. So split into two CCPUDs, ours is the 227, which will remain the same with the addition of this new parking lot. So current building will remain and then current fencing, current site from the street will all stay the same. We're just adding seven parking spots as shown on the site plan. And so this is what the site plan looks like in context. You can kind of see just those additional seven parking spots on the back. The current building frontage, that screening fence will stay with the pedestrian access so that people can access the dentistry building from that parking lot. And then you've already seen this slide also, but this is just the whole project in context with Joey's new building and the existing buildings staying outlined in red with the additional new parking. With that, I'll take any questions.
I apologize for jumping ahead earlier. I think it's great that they're adding parking. That will help. But can you address the reasons for keeping the angled parking after staff has questioned whether that's a concern or not?
So the intent there is since it is a handicap parking spot, just to increase accessibility, give a little bit more space, larger vehicles, more room to get in and out. And then we think since it's such a narrow drive, people are already backing, it feels tight, people will be slow, people will be careful.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions for the applicant, Planning Commission discussion?
I just want to make one clarification and I apologize if I'm doing this out of order, but my position to the last item was not necessarily for the project. I just, I didn't feel it was necessary to, to go along the lines of saying it's must be 50%, so I wanted to clarify that. I think it's a great project. I think downtown Norman needs more projects like this to revitalize downtown Norman. I thought hopefully that will then spur on some additional development, so I'm in favor of this.
It is a nice set of projects and it is revitalizing. It's nice to see, you know, more retail and residential going in, paired up together. All right. If there's a motion, we'll take it.
I have to approve.
End of vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries eight to zero with one abstain.
Moving to our next non-consent items, number five, six, and seven. Item number five, consideration of approval, acceptance, and/or postponement of resolution R-2425-100, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove part of the southeast quarter and the northeast quarter of section 11 Township 9 North, Range 3 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the industrial designation and place the same in the institutional designation generally located on the east side of North Flood Avenue, north of the intersection of North Flood Avenue and 24th Avenue Northwest. Item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-35. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to grant special use for the church, temple, or other place of worship in the I-1 Light Industrial District for the southeast quarter and the northeast quarter of section 11 Township 9 North, Range 3 West of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, and providing for the severability thereof, generally located on the east side of North Flood Avenue, north of the intersection of North Flood Avenue and 24th Avenue Northwest. Item number seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of PP-2425-11. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Victory Family Church, Inc., Crafton Toll for Victory Family Church, 2024 Parking, formerly Bioside East Park Edition, for 10.28 acres of property generally located on the east side of North Flood Avenue, north of the intersection of North Flood Avenue and 24th Avenue Northwest. We'll take the staff presentation.
All right. Thank you. Justin Fish at the Plan Department again. As stated, we have an application for the property generally located on the east side of North Flood Avenue, north of the intersection, North Flood Avenue and 24th Avenue Northwest. They are wanting to change the industrial designation on the 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to an institutional designation. The subject tract is outlined on the screen. To the north is an institutional use with industrial uses pretty much surrounding the property. Accompanying this request is a special use application in consideration of a preliminary plat. Proposed is a special use for a church, temple, or other place of worship. The applicant is requesting a special use so they may construct an overflow parking lot area to be used by the Victory Family Church located on the lot directly north of the subject parcel. The parking lot will be, will also tie into the existing parking lot over at the Victory Family Church. This is the current zoning of the area. These are the existing land uses. Going back to this for a second, this area property is currently zoned I-1 Light Industrial District. To the east, there is a special use for an office and A1 zone properties. To the southwest and the north are more industrial properties. Zoned I-1. This is the overhead view. This is a view looking north on North Flood Avenue. Looking south on North Flood Avenue. Looking east towards the subject parcel. And west across the street, North Flood Avenue. The proposed preliminary plat and the site plan for the parking lot. The parking lot will feature full cutoff lights and meet all commercial outdoor lighting standards as well as landscaping. Staff is available for questions. The applicant is also present for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff by commission?
I have a question. That's a lot of impervious surface. Are there any concerns about the stormwater runoff?
A drainage report was done and impervious coverage was looked at for this property as well. There are meeting all of the landscaping requirements for a parking lot, especially one of this size. Todd from Polk Works can answer more on that question.
Yes, Todd McClellan, Development Engineer. There is an existing detention pond that's to the south here, and when that was built, that has capacity to handle this additional runoff.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Drive going out to 24th Avenue. Drive going out to 24th Avenue, does that align to any existing drives on the other side of 24th Avenue?
They are going to align with the drives across the street over at Adventure Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If no other...
I've got one more question. I'm just trying to look at this. Am I reading this correctly? I'm looking at the same diagram that you are. I don't see where the landscaping is, in particular, I'm looking... So these small white beds. So are these bushes, are there large trees planned? Is it clear from the landscaping here?
I'm not entirely sure what kind of vegetation we planted, but they are aware that it has to meet all of the landscaping requirements.
Okay, thank you.
To just clarify on that. So we don't know what's going in those particular landscaping beds within the parking lot? Are they low-impact development techniques, like some sort of rain garden filtration system? Or like, we have any idea what's going in there?
I would say it would be trees, bushes, berms, bios foils, things of that nature. I can't provide any specific plant names.
If there's an applicant presentation, we may also be able to address that with our applicant.
Is the size of the lot, is that based on code requirements? Or is this an applicant choice? The size of the parking lot?
The size of the parking lot, it was the applicant's choice.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Seeing none, we take the applicant's presentation.
Hello, Krishnagan, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard with Crafton Toll representing Victory Family Church. I don't have a presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, I have a question. I can speak now, thank you. So whenever I see parking lots like this, stormwater comes to mind, but also heat. You know, it's just a magnet for heat in summer. Are you all planning to plant large trees to help knock back that heat and give shade?
Exact landscaping hasn't been finalized, but we will follow landscaping requirements, including trees.
Okay, so I think you probably just answered this, but to clarify, are you aware of any low-impact development techniques being used to help with the runoff from that very large impervious surface?
Not necessarily low impact. We will be following all landscape requirements, but we don't have anything specifically finalized for the landscaping specifically.
Okay, and as to the large expanse of the parking lot, how was it decided, do you know, for the 871 parking spots?
So this is being built to facilitate a church expansion, which the church estimates that the expansion will take out about 300 existing parking spaces. And an auditorium will be built for about 50,000 square feet and 3,000 additional seats. So that, we've tried to maximize the parking in order to facilitate that much of an expansion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kendall, did you have a question?
Okay, I'm going to go backwards a little bit and I apologize. Not 24th Avenue. I'm talking about alignment to Flood. I think Venture, the Venture Drive is where I'm talking about. Is there existing drives right now or is this a new?
So if you see those two drives that are not filled in, those are, those will be new, but they're not included in this project. Those will be part of the church expansion itself. And there's an existing drive just to the north of those.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to make sure because I could not remember if that was existing or if that's just future.
That it's tentative, that it's conceptual, but it's future.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Seeing none, we would move to any audience comments. Seeing none, Planning Commission discussion?
My live, thanks. You know, we've given a lot of discussion when big box stores come in and they want to build large parking lots. And I'm glad the church is expanding, I think that's great. But I do have concerns that this giant parking lot is just going to sit there for most of the week or, you know, over half the week and not be used much. And so, you know, when it's not in use, you know, I do think it's important to be thoughtful about mitigating the heat gain that comes from all the concrete and asphalt that's involved with parking lots.
Commissioner Burge, do you have any thoughts about additional uses by churches that you could add to from some of your experiences during off-hours that might be beneficial?
What's challenging about this is that typically additional uses are for users in the nearby vicinity that may have a need for parking. Most of the discussion that we've had surrounding the Center City Form Based Code area and other areas within more core Norman is that there are surrounding businesses, OU students, a number of different kind of 24/7 activities that allow for additional use of the parking that also mitigates parking issues in the core area as well. I am not aware enough of what's surrounding here to know if there's any additional need for parking. But if there is, it's certainly something that would make sense for the church to entertain if that's something that they would be open to, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was generally my comments as well is to look for ways that if we are asking to build large parking lots and we've seen some other faith-based organizations having good community partnership before, but looking for opportunities here as well to maybe reduce other parking needs somewhere else, even if they are not immediately on-site.
And one other idea is just something to consider from the church's side is that there are also recreational uses that the church could use this for. I've seen models where you can put in pickleball courts or things of that nature that are kind of pop-up, if you will. And so, given that churches have a big recreational component and with their youth programs and other things like that, maybe something to consider that you kind of stripe it in a different way, that you get a little more creative with it, so. I say that, it's not, I'm not a requirement, just an idea.
Thank you.
My comment is just when, when we're presented with such a huge parking space, that coming with some more definitive landscaping plans, just anticipating what questions there could be about the expanse, the runoff, does it need to be asphalt, those kind of things. So it's not going to hold me back. I understand that your volume on Sunday, you're anticipating the needs for this, but definitely get creative, definitely. As you move into the landscaping, I would suggest looking at what's going to grow fast and create shade. What is going to not require too much water at the same time? And or near the, was it detention or retention that was nearby? Retention. So being mindful in not adding to the water, but then on the fringes near what is existing to take runoff, those things that, you know, the rain gardens and whatnot. So I don't know, you might, you might talk to your church community and see if there's some subcommittees that want to get creative and view it as an earth stewardship aspect of worship. But that's, again, not a requirement, just a suggestion.
Thank you. If no other, Planning Commission discussion, I would take a motion.
Move to Brew.
I second it.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we could take a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries eight to one.
Thank you. Moving to our next item, number eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of Ordinance O-2425-36, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Section 36-201 of the Code of the City of Norman so as to grant special use for tavern in the C3 Intensive Commercial District for lots 1, 2, and Block 32 of original town of Norman of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, and providing for the severability thereof, 101 South Porter Avenue. And I'll take the staff presentation.
Hi. Able with the Planning Department. Let me find my... Okay, so on the agenda tonight, we have a special use for bar, tavern, or lounge in the C3 Intensive Commercial zoning district. The subject property, which is dotted there on the corner, is zone C3. It will remain C3. And it's also within the Porter Corridor zoning overlay district. And it's C3 intensive commercial on all sides. There it is on the corner. And I tried to get a good overview in here for you guys so that you can see this is a walkable commercial area. There's other nearby businesses like the Blue Bonnet and Prohibition Bar. Lazy Circles Brewery is to the east. That is looking east. And then the property is there on the right-hand side of your picture. It looks like the building's red. It's not that color anymore, but in this picture it is. The subject property used to be a restaurant and it's currently vacant. If approved, the applicant intends to have a bar with food service and an outdoor seating area. This is looking north. This is looking south. And this is directly west, which of course backs into Main Street there. Here is the proposed floor plan. And then this is the site plan. And one note that I did want to make, the hatched area that is on the site plan is not in the scope of this project. And the special use will only be for the area to the left that is not hatched. It's just the least space. This right here will become the patio outdoor seating area and it will have a fence and landscaping planters around it. Robin and Eric Fredrickson are here to answer any questions you may have. Staff is also available for questions and we forward this item to you for consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for staff by the commission?
One question, just for clarification, is, I know with breweries, a special use is always required, but is a special use always required for a bar, tavern within a C3? Or is it just specific to certain properties?
It's, well, it's specific to the amount of food versus alcohol sales that you have.
But if it is over 50% bar alcohol sales, then the special use...
Then a special use is required, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant's presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a presentation per se, other than, you know, we intend to assist in the redevelopment of downtown. It's, you know, it's become gentrified and, you know, we hope to add to that. It's going to be upscale. I make kind of a standing joke, there won't be anybody spitting in a cup. No TVs, this kind of thing. It's named Maximilian Social Club for that reason. Anyway, and I was unprepared, although I do have a degree in speech. I didn't prepare anything for y'all, but I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant by commission?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I think this is great. I love outdoor seating restaurants, so I'm glad to, I'm glad to see y'all are revitalizing this corner. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it'll be exciting, good for downtown.
And you had existing parking that was being converted into this outdoor seating, correct?
If I'm understanding your question, and I'm not sure that I am, that was initially outdoor parking and then the city has made that into that patio. And there is parking on the street naturally and there's parking behind, quite a bit of parking in the rear.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I would move to any discussion or audience comments. So do we have any audience comments for this item? Okay, yeah, if you will come up and if you've not turned in a card, just make sure you say your name and your address when you're there. And we will set a timer for three minutes. And if you'd like a 30-second warning, let us know.
Impervious surfaces since this is already in an area which is basically impervious. And I just wish it had more housing, but I do support it.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Seeing none, I would move to Planning Commission.
I'm just going to second Commissioner Jablonski's comment. This is, I think this is going to be a great activation of that corner. Corners are notoriously difficult to activate. I liked what the city had done in partnership with the property owner to take this to an area that could be enjoyed by the public. And I was, I've been hoping for a long time that we had a user like this that would actually allow for outdoor seating to be utilized. So I think it's going to be pretty neat and it's a cool little building, too. So, good idea.
I will second both of those. I think this is going to be a great project. Thank you for bringing it forward.
I just wanted to also mention about some other projects that are like this in Oklahoma City that we may be familiar with. There is the RJ Supper Lounge, which has been pretty successful for a long time. I did not go check any fire code rating, but from just a quick Google search, they had about a 25 to 32-person seating, so similar kind of concept to that for something to imagine. And then there's also a newer concept called Later Buy that's on 13th. And that one has 31 seats and outdoor seating. So I think there is some appetite for this in our community. It's nice to see these projects in Norman, as much as I enjoy going to Oklahoma City. I think this will be great, something new for our town. And I would do miss 25 or 30 years ago getting the kebabs from that restaurant. So it'd be nice to be able to go and revisit it and, yeah, see it in a new use.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, a few others. The original Sidecar in downtown Oklahoma City, Skinny Slims, the Pump Bar, which is bigger, but is also a corner lot that has a great activation, outdoor seating. I'm sounding like all I do is go to bars, I actually don't get to very often. So partly because there's not something like this in Norman, so it'll be very neat.
If no other discussion, I would take a motion.
Motion to approve?
I second it.
And a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries nine to zero.
Okay, moving... Okay, moving on to items. Item number nine, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-31, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 20, Licenses and Occupations, Section 20-1910, Premises is Maintained, and section throughout Chapter 30 subdivisions of the code, in order to update definitions, to update and add references to the city's comprehensive plan, to require a 30-acre minimum lot size for rural certificates of survey with an urban reserve land use designation, to update language to ensure compatibility with the AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan and its various included master plans, and to clarify or correct language, including for errors, and providing for the severability thereof. The applicant requests postponement to the May 8, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Again, that is May 8, 2025. Can we take a motion on that?
I move to postpone to the May 8, 2025 Planning Commission. Is it just item nine or nine and 10?
I read, only read number nine, so we'll do 10.
Or number nine.
I second.
And a vote?
All votes have been cast, and it carries nine to zero.
And moving to item number 10, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance O-2425-32, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending sections throughout Chapter 36 zoning of the code, in order to update definitions, to update and add references to the city's comprehensive plan to ensure compatibility with the AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan and its various included master plans, and to clarify or correct language, including for errors, and providing for the severability thereof. The applicant requests postponement to the May 8, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. I would take a motion on this item now, too.
Move to postpone to the May 8, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. All votes have been cast, zero.
Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for the commission? Do commissioners have any comments they'd like to make?
I was just gonna follow up on one comment I made about the 15-foot clear height. I commented about potential for an amendment to the code. I know that there's been three different ad hoc committees that have looked at the code. Given that we've had multiple applications with this request, it seems like something that would be a reasonable update, whether it's through ad hoc committee or through a single amendment, because if that's something that discourages developers from building, having to go through the CCPED process, or just looking at the code and thinking, "I can't do that," we don't want that. So, just to follow up there.
If I could add on to that, if there is a good reason to have the 15-foot clear height, then it would be nice for the city to explain to us, you know, the subtleties of the complications with building materials, but why that 15-foot is in the code to begin with.
Yeah, and I will say, as someone who's worked with a lot of lumber, 12-foot lengths, that's the primary reason from a building side, and that can add to, add significant costs when you're having to cut down lumber like that. And so, but likewise, if there is a reason for it, I'd like to hear both sides, if you will, so.
Just to comment on that, sometimes the difference of going from 15 feet to 12 feet means the difference of having to do steel versus wood construction, which is a substantial cost difference in building, and it can be the difference of a building being made or not. So having, being able to have that shorter height, I think, would be beneficial to allowing developers with less capital being able to create projects that might be really interesting. That would be something I'd be in favor of. I also would in general be in favor of having some level of a scheduled occurring meeting for the ad hoc committee to happen, whether that is annually, biannually, something to that nature. So as these things come up, they could maybe be presented at a regular interval. So maybe not waiting for a call or a specific single item, but having opportunities that citizens can come and add these comments in. As we've seen things, maybe we can also provide our comments in, and knowing when those will happen at a scheduled interval as well. Any other commission comments? Okay, if there's nothing else to come before the commission, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.